Good morning Manchester and to those of you in the surrounding towns, this is Gerard at Large and I am your still can't get over what they do at the Goffstown School Board host Rich Gerard, thanks for tuning in. We actually didn't have time to work this into our news story, but that's okay because it's going to take us some time to unwind what happened last night at the Goffstown School Board. You know, when the Cardinals, the conclave of Cardinals at the Vatican finally reach a decision on a new Pope.
Habemos papam.
That's right. Which loosely translated means, "We have a Pope, we have a Pope." Well, I don't know what-
It's when the white smoke comes up.
That's when the white smoke comes up, that's right. It's black smoke until it's white smoke and there's no Pope until there is a Pope and that's the whole thing from black smoke to white smoke, right?
So... I like the hats. They're snappy.
You know, one of the interesting stories about what happens when there's a new Pope is there's this, there's this clothier, for lack of a better term, specialty clothier, tailor, and somehow, in all of the fury of electing a new Pope, they get the measurements of the dude and by the time he leaves the conclave to walk up to the, you know, that perch overlooking the balcony, they somehow managed to create for him an entire set of new-
New vestments.
-tapeless vestments.
Yeah, you know, what has to happen, Rich? It's gotta-
No, I actually saw a news story-
Everybody believes in miracles, but they have to like say, "Okay, these five guys are the finalists, let's go ahead and measure them, we're gonna make five outfits, whoever wins, we throw it on them."
Well, because no one knows who the finalists are.
Well, yeah.
They do not break the seal on the conclave.
Measure everybody.
So, I don't know-
And then they're back there thinking, "Looks like Jimmy's gonna win, start selling."
But it's a, it was a fascinating story. So, anyway, I don't know why that came to mind, but in Goffstown, I guess it would be, "We have a consulting contract, we have a consulting contract."
Is that what the white smoke is from the Goffstown School Board?
Yes, well, that might be the smoke that's coming out of Stacy Buckley's ears right now. But, um, a couple of things happened last night at the Goffstown-
She's burning all those right to know requests.
All those right to know requests?
That's what the white smoke is.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Well, there was some information, as our listeners here know, we have been in pursuit of the, uh, the funding for consultants from Suresk, a Bedford-based, uh, school training outfit, I don't know how you describe them. But they were among the contestants for this contract. And we'd been in pursuit of financial information on how it is or why it is, there were people on site there, "Oh, it turned out to be training, it was a grant." So Stacy Buckley, who did not have any of the financial information I was requesting because Hampton School District actually got the grant and shared it with Goffstown, um, was able to tell the Goffstown School Board last night that it was a $20,000 grant which they split with Hampton, administered by Hampton. Uh, but apparently, I don't know if she released the amount of money that Goffstown actually got for the funding, but, uh, you know, the information that I was asking for, which she said she did not have, somehow got presented. You know, Mike, you're a state rep.
Yes.
And I have a question for you. The Office of Public Integrity at the Attorney General's office, would they get involved in a complaint regarding a systematic and obvious attempt by, uh, appointed or elected officials to frustrate requests under the right to know law?
One would hope they would.
One would hope they would.
But knowing what I know about state government, sometimes they don't do what you expect them to do.
No, I was looking-
Much to my chagrin.
I was looking at that in the website last night, the Office of Public Integrity, and I was questionable as to whether or not I thought they would get involved in a right to know request, but I am-
Well, it depends on what you want to know, Rich. If you want to know things they don't think are very savory, they're not gonna help you out, bro. I don't know.
Well, let me, let me tell you, I, I don't know. So, it was reported at the GSB School Board, according to one of my sources last night watching the meeting, that Goffstown applied for a grant through the state of New Hampshire, the grant was awarded for 20,000 to be shared with Hampton. Now, it sounds like Goffstown got the grant and not Hampton, but Stacy told me that Hampton got the grant and not Goffstown. And anyway, it was not detailed as to whether, uh, we received, Goffstown received half, but the funds were spent on Dr. Howard Muscat from Suresk for the training, uh, for training the leadership team. Now, one of the things I asked in my right to know request of Goffstown was how much money was spent. And the answer I was given, and what was there in RFP request? And the answer I was given is, "Oh, well, no, this did not rise to the threshold of needing an RFP."
I think they used part of it to buy a life-size poster of you and they throw darts at it. I would imagine there's something like that down there.
But, um, here's the big news of the night, and, uh, prediction, there will be a lawsuit in Goffstown over this. Prediction, because I got an email from somebody who said there is going to be a lawsuit in Goffstown over this.
Wow.
But they did announce that they awarded the bid for consulting services. Now, remember, when they were talking about the consulting services, you know what, before I get to that, I got a couple of housekeeping items I gotta do. Gerard at Large, time here is 6:12. Today is another busy, busy show. We will be discussing what happened at Goffstown for the good chunk of the first hour. Taking your calls at 672-0573, that's 672-0573. And, uh, if anything personifies, fact is stranger than fiction. It is watching the Goffstown School Board. Now, unfortunately, I was not able to be at the meeting last night, but I had some friends who were there and I've got an avalanche of email as things were happening. You know what I should've done? Was made them administrators on the Gerard at Large Facebook page so they could've blogged the meeting.
Blogged.
So, the winning bid went to a company called West Ed, which was one of the original three solicited by-
This is Goffstown School Board.
Goffstown, I'm sorry, yeah, we're back on Goffstown School Board. So, it was one of the original three solicited by stupid superintendent, Stacey Buckley, sorry about that. Uh, West Ed at a cost of $35,581.
And what are they getting for this, exactly?
Training? Uh, no, no, this is to do the evaluation to find out what's wrong at Mountain View Middle School.
Thirty-five grand to tell you what's wrong?
Yeah.
The kids know what's wrong over there.
And that's, and that's-
Ask one of them.
Well, you know, I guess-
Good God.
You know-
You got eighth graders can tell you what's wrong.
The new Boston Bulletin had a front page story on it, on what was happening there and the complaints to the kids in July. It was free.
Students speak out about MVMS. Why don't you ask them, take a sampling of eighth graders and ask them.
Listening to my show is free, how many-
They're all 14 years old, they know.
Oh, yeah.
My God. They're gonna have driver's licenses in two years, they can be responsible.
That's right.
I don't think I've ever heard of that before, the kids complaining.
But now, here's-
Kid comes up, goes, "Boy, this school's really screwed up."
But now, here's the deal. So, the deadline for submission of bids was the 12th and they awarded the bids five days later. I contacted Ben Hampton last night, who I'm guessing is the, uh, uh, School Board member Dan Cloutier asked for, uh, the prices from other companies. They would not release the names of the other companies. One came in at $40,000, one came in at a buck, I'm betting that's Ben Hampton.
Yeah.
And one came in at $27,100 and if I had to bet, I would bet that was Suresk, the employer of the vice chairman of the School Board, who, by the way, miraculously, all of a sudden, recused herself on a vote on this matter. But I'm not sure how to interpret the recusal because it was not for her employer, it was for a competitor to her employer. So was her refusal to vote last night, all of a sudden her being aware of the conflict of interest policy that she's been violating for months on this topic and saying, "Oh", I sent that guy Gerard an email saying, "I would not cast a vote on the final bid award, so I better not." Or was she in a position where, because she hadn't recused herself throughout the process and she actually cast the tie-breaking vote that made last night's votes possible? Was she not going to vote for a company that was not her employer?
Well, here's the other issue.
Oh!
What's the, what's the name of the company that bid $40,000?
We don't know.
The high bid.
Stacy Buckley will not release them.
But Suresk bid 35,000, is that correct?
We don't know. No, West Ed.
West Ed.
Bid 35,000.
And we don't know what Suresk bid.
We don't.
See, now, here's the problem. And you know, it's right now, we're thinking, "Okay, here's somebody who's employed by a company that got a bid and maybe there's might be some hinky business." What they, what this could lead to though, is opening up the city of Goffstown to a lawsuit because if I'm the contractor who didn't get the bid and I find out that there's a employee of my competitor on the board and their competitor got the bid, I'm gonna say, "Well, you took my bid," and I used to be in the construction business, it's called bid shopping. You take the bid and you go, "Okay, it's X amount of dollars" and you go around and go, "Hey, I've got a bid for X amount of dollars, can you beat it?" And so, and so, "Yeah, I'll do it for a thousand bucks less or 20,000 bucks less." And then, so if I'm the person who didn't get the job, I'm gonna file a lawsuit and say, "I should've gotten that and you guys shopped my bid around."
Yeah.
And prove it, you got an employee of the company that won the bid on your board making the decision, how about that?
Yeah, well-
Yeah.
Now, there's a lawsuit. Well, and that very well could happen, but, uh, for some reason, the superintendent of Goffstown Schools is taking the position that, uh, the matrix of how the decision was made and the names of the other bidders are not for public consumption. And she refused to release it.
Good thing we're not spending public money on that.
And she refused to release it last night. So, how do we know Suresk isn't the bid at 27,000 or the bid at 40? We don't.
All this could be resolved by letting us know.
Now, here's the other thing, my guess is, is that there are four bids.
Yeah.
Probably the three that Stacy originally solicited, whose names she originally released, one of which was West Ed, the other which was Suresk, and one bid for $1 that I know is Ben Hampton because I know he submitted a bid. Now, he didn't send me the bid, but he let me know that he complied with the RFP that actually got issued and he submitted the bid. Um, my guess is that since, in reply to an email I sent him last night, he said he was not contacted in any way following the submission of his bid, not even to confirm that the bid had been received, that since he wasn't interviewed, the first time they said he was gonna interview him, and he wasn't interviewed this time, my guess is that the fix was in for one of the original three that were solicited by Stacy Buckley without an RFP. And the guy, and it's not like Ben Hampton's some crackpot. I mean, we got his resume, he assembled a team, they met the qualifications of the RFP without any question. So, why wouldn't they give it to a guy who's qualified, who has a team, who's willing to do it for a buck? What are they gonna get for $35,581? An increase of $35,580 over what they could've gotten it for? What are they gonna get out of that?
Is it 35,000 times better than Ben could've done? I don't doubt it.
You know-
Well, I know when people offer me services basically for free, I always choose the one that costs me 30K more. Because that's just the common sense way.
That's just you, Mr. Moneybags. Just like the taxpayers in Goffstown.
But you know what? Those bids, now, here's, here's the-
Imagine, if you're a taxpayer in Goffstown, somebody comes and goes, "Hey, we, we could've had this done for a dollar, but we decided to pay 35 instead, 35,000." People are like, "Oh, yeah, okay, what are we getting for it? Oh, same thing the dollar was gonna get us, but, you know, we had the money." Well, actually, you've got the money, what the hell?
Well, we, um, we have Donna Pennard from the Goffstown School Board Watch on the line. She's been listening apparently this morning and is calling in. Uh, good morning, Donna.
Good morning, Rich, how are ya?
You know, I'm-
How are you?
You know, I'm glad for, I'm glad for the things that make my job easy. I mean, God, what would I talk about if I didn't have Goffstown giving me stuff every week?
It is amazing, isn't it?
Well, you know, I guess part of what, part of what I was gonna get to too here, before you get running here, Donna, I got a couple of questions for you. But apparently, they tried to go into non-public session last night to discuss in, in private session the, the bids and some of the questions that, uh, the School Board members were asking, particularly Lori, Lori and Dan Cloutier. Uh, but apparently, they, despite taking a vote to go into non-public session, what did they do? Reverse themselves and decide not to go in?
They didn't actually take the vote to go into non-public. So, before, they, they asked everyone to leave the room. So, everyone left the room because they claimed they were gonna go into non-public. But then they discussed, "Which part of the law do we have to cite in order to be able to enter into non-public to discuss this?" So, they went through all the different parts of the law and came to the conclusion that none of them applied and therefore they could not go into non-public to discuss it. At which point, Dan Cloutier said, "I'll take my motion off the table to, to table it until non-public." Um, so Ginny McKinnon's, uh, motion to just accept the superintendent's recommendation then came back into play, which was seconded by Suzanne Trembley, and, and they took the vote. And that was that, nobody got any extra information at all.
My, my sources who were monitoring the meeting for me last night said that the superintendent refused to disclose the identities of the other bidders and also refused to disclose the process by which they determined in five days to whom they were going to award this $35,000 contract. Is, is that accurate? Did you watch the meeting last night?
I did watch it. And, um, Lori Cloutier did ask to see the matrix of how-
What's this matrix thing?
Matrix meaning, okay, you had an RFP, you were looking for these kinds of things, how did you rate them, what, you know, um, how, what made you lead to this particular company? What, what strengths did they have that the others didn't have? Uh, how did you sort the information and make the decision? Uh, Stacy did not want to go public with how that decision was made.
Why not? It's a public request for proposal process, they're making their recommendations, there is the, the decision. Why is that information not for public consumption? Someone explain that to me.
Okay, so one of the reasons they threw out there for not wanting to do that is that until a contract is rewarded, you don't want to necessarily have a whole bunch of information out there of the different nuances of each bid, in case you're still playing the bidding war and trying to decide which, which company to go with, you don't want the other company to-
But she's brought forward, you know, I understand what you're saying, but if she's brought forward a recommendation, then supposedly there is no further negotiation taking place. She wanted one, she picked one, she recommended it. I think it's up to her to justify it. Lori Cloutier was exactly right to ask those questions. And, uh, if that's the recommendation, tell me why.
I agree, I agree. Um, however, the majority, six members of the School Board did not feel it was necessary to know any of that, so they trusted Stacy Buckley. And part of the criticism that's been out there regarding problems at Mountain View Middle School with administration and staff kind of being, um, um, administration picking on staff or, or be bullying them, uh, is that Stacy Buckley is part of the problem. So, the School Board just, you know, shot themselves in the foot by just randomly, without any information, accepting her recommendation. And lo and behold, it's kind of ironic to me that it's one of the three original bids before she even put an RFP out there. So, this is one of the companies that she was in contact with who knows how long ago.
So, now, now that, now that the School Board has acted, are they going to release the information they refused to release because, well, gee, the nuances of the other bids might give somebody an advantage and change, change the decision of the School Board. Are they gonna release it now?
Well, is anyone gonna ask for it? That's, you know, I mean, I mean-
Oh, count on it, the email is going to be there within moments of the show's end, if not in four.
Exactly. So, I mean, are, you know, would any, would any of the School Board members say, "Okay, well, now that the bid has been awarded, let's see what you got"? Or, you know, will anybody from the town actually care and follow along and, and monitor even this new company? Now, we have to find out who, Diane McCarthy tried to hide her association with Suresk when it first came out. Is there any association with Stacy Buckley or any administrators or any School Board members with West Ed? I mean, that question was not asked, that would've been one of the first questions I'd ask, is there any connection here?
Gerard at Large, nine, Gerard at Large, time is 6:39. We're on the phone with Donna Pennard of Goffstown School Board Watch. She's filling in some of the blanks for us on the unbelievable actions of the Goffstown School Board last night. In summary, by the way, Dave, I don't know if you, are you following the Twitter feed?
I am.
Uh, okay. So, did you get the WMUR tweet about Route 101 closed at Exit 1 in Manchester?
I did.
Okay. Um, we are, we are going over the, that's right, Dave followed it, so I don't need to worry about traffic tweets because Dave is on it. So, we are talking about, so in summary, they had a non-public supposed bid process which we grabbed over the summer. By the way, when was the last time you ever heard a discussion at the Goffstown School Board about whether or not the law allowed them to go into non-public session?
I don't believe I've ever heard that discussion before, so they obviously must be listening to you because all of a sudden they're taking it into consideration. Um, Dan Cloutier did bring it up last night to say, "Hey, we're, you know, that we are under scrutiny for this, maybe we should look at the law before we go in and make sure it applies."
So, so, and to be clear, uh, to give everybody a little background, I requested a, a copy of the authorization from Stacy Buckley that she received from the Goffstown School Board to actually formally issue a request for proposal. Back during the summer, they went and privately solicited bids for a consulting study, which, uh, we grabbed on to and said, "Really? How about a public RFP process, request for proposal?" And what's transpired since, um, can only be described as incredible, but they finally did issue a request for proposal, a formal one. They, they put in a file, according to Stacy Buckley, the bids that they received on the last unofficial, illegal, in my opinion, uh, bid process. Um, and now, having solicited bids through a public process, are refusing to release the names of the bidders, the bids they submitted, and-
Well, Rich, you say illegal in your opinion, but it's illegal.
Well-
It's not an opinion, it's illegal, right?
According to Stacy Buckley, by the way, because I asked, what, by what authorization did she issue the RFP? The School Board took no action to, uh, direct or ask that one be created. They took no action approving one or authorizing its issuance. And, uh, her reply to me, she sent me minutes of the June 4th meeting where they generally agreed to continue with the process. I sent her back a note saying, "Well, that doesn't tell me that they authorized an RFP." And her reply was, so I asked her specifically, in the absence of School Board authorization, what law or regulation was in place, uh, that allowed her to issue one without any sort of approval. And she said that there is no law or regulation. Be careful, Stacy, you might want to consult with your solicitor on this. There was no law or regulation governing her and she could issue an RFP, uh, just because.
Uh, no.
Yeah.
No.
And the thing is, is, you know, she's been working in our district for eight years. She started as an assistant superintendent and then became superintendent. But the thing is, is, you know, we've trained her. So, our town, our taxpayers have borne the brunt of someone who didn't have the experience. And that, you know, has included a lot of tax dollars spent on grievances and lawsuits, and now it looks like there will be more.
Now, Donna, I, uh, was checking through some of the documents that I have been reviewing over time here in Goffstown. And one of them is the ethics policy statement, uh, which I believe Dan Cloutier, your husband, refused to sign, correct?
Correct.
And, and reading this, I'm struck by some of it, is it says, "As a member of my local Board of Education, I will strive to improve public education and to that end, I will strive to do all the following. Attend all regularly scheduled board, board meetings insofar as possible and become informed concerning the issues to be considered at those meetings. Recognize that I should endeavor to make policy decisions only after a full discussion at publicly held board meetings and render all decisions based on the available facts and my independent judgment and refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups and then encourage the free expression of opinion by all board members." Well, you know, I'm looking at the second and third ones that I read. Um, and inasmuch as there were School Board members asking for the specifics, asking for information upon which to make a decision, so that it could be entirely above board, all bidders known, all details of the process known, all decisions made by the, the administration and making their recommendation known. It seems to me that they violated their own ethics policy by voting in favor of something where there was an information knowingly withheld from them for the purposes of that, of this decision.
Oh, Rich, Rich, Rich. The ethics policy only applies when they want it to. Don't you know that? It doesn't apply if they don't want it-
In all fairness, the procedures governing the bid process only apply when they want it to. Remember what happened to Cigna when they actually won the bid for the city's health insurance, but the alderman extended the, the time and gave, gave, oh, no, that anthem, "That wasn't really our best offer, but if you give us more time, we'll really give you our best offer this time."
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it seems, oh my God.
I mean-
Donna, a couple of closing thoughts on this one, dear.
Yeah, unethical people. Um, you know, um, it depends on which way the wind is blowing. They, they, they decided to let Stacy, they decided not to bypass the SAU and make this decision and do the work themselves or get the information, they just voted on her recommendation. And now we're gonna be $35,000 in the whole thing.
Now, how does, how does this parent committee that, or whatever committee that's been operating over the last several weeks, uh, how do they fit into this? Are they done? And by the way, what do you make of Diane McCarthy finally recusing herself on a vote? Does she have a sudden attack of conscience or did she not want to vote for somebody that, uh, wasn't her employer?
Um, because we do not know whether the other two bids, the one for 27,000 and the one for 40,000, we still don't even know if Suresk is one of those. So, did she vote against, you know, did not want to vote against her employer? I'm not sure her employer even put one in, I'm not sure. Because Stacy won't tell us. Maybe now that they've actually awarded the contract to West Ed, they'll let us know who the other bidders were. So, who knows why Diane McCarthy does what she does? I don't think finding logic in the thinking is the way to go. You just have to state, "This is what's happening" and therefore, how do you get truth at the end of it when you have unethical people who, who drift with the wind?
I wouldn't be surprised if there was a lawsuit filed over this one. Donna Pennard from Goffstown School Board Watch, thanks for having your ears on and thanks for calling us in.
All right.
First of all, it is not an inconsiderable issue to want to maintain the secrecy of bids prior to an award. That is, that is not, um, an irrelevant issue. However, if the superintendent of schools had wanted to discuss in non-public session the receipt of the bids and seek direction from the School Board for negotiations as part of the bid process, she would have properly posted that to the agenda, noted it would be a review of bids received in an ongoing evaluative process to seek direction from the board, which is within its right to do. And they would have, so it would've been posted, they would've gone in, they would've given the direction, Stacy Buckley would've gone back to the bidders with whatever direction that she received and asked them to refine their bids for a final recommendation. And then, when it was time to award the bid, she would have brought it in public session to the School Board with her recommend, with her recommendation as to who the bidder should be, why the bidder should be, uh, award, why the bid should be awarded. And the questions that Lori Cloutier were asking would have been properly answered in public session. And all of the bidders at that point in time, the recommendation having been made, would have been made public. That is the way the process should work. So, to bring this recommendation without any regard for the other, for, for the School Board members' questions, I think they properly decided not to go into non-public session because they weren't there to discuss an ongoing situation, an ongoing evaluation. They weren't there to seek direction, they were there to make the recommendation they asked the board to adopt. So, they made the correct decision in not going into non-public. Stacy Buckley made the incorrect decision not to put it on the agenda to seek their input. Now, if I'm a School Board member, I get this ethics policy out there saying, "I will only make decisions based on a full airing of the facts in public session." Well, that didn't happen last night. So, the superintendent of schools apparently led to a situation where School Board members, probably unknowingly, because they're so smug and arrogant over there, they think they don't have to follow their own policy. You know what the irony of the whole thing is? The only guy who apparently followed the ethics policy was the guy, Dan Cloutier, who refused to sign it, remember that? We carried that story here on Gerard at Large?
So, the residents of Goffstown-
Oh, and Lori Cloutier who abstained.
Instead of paying $1 to a qualified bidder for this contract, are gonna pay how much?
35,581. That's a 35,581% increase over what they could've spent. Something tells me they're not gonna get results that are 35,581% better.
And the only reason Ben Hampton bid for a dollar is because they wouldn't let him do it for free, which is what he originally wanted to do.
Right.
Correct?
Yep, something like that. So, here's, here's the deal. They, at every turn, I don't know if this is malfeasance, I don't know if it's arrogance, I don't know if it's incompetence, I suggest it's probably all of the above. I mean, good heavens, Phil Pankos, Chairman of the Board, do you, do you realize that you can pick up the phone and call the School Boards Association and get direction on what you should be doing? Do you realize you could call the local government center? Do you know, I mean, I can't tell you how much material I found in online searches about the proper way of conducting meetings in light of the right to know law? I, I mean, this is ridiculous. You know, it's funny, people like to put down our adorable little radio show. But clearly, and you know what's wrong in Goff, at the end of the day, you know what's wrong in Goffstown? And, and you know the pressure that this show has put on what's happening in Goffstown? happening in Goffstown? And thanks to our many friends and listeners and informants, frankly, in Goffstown, who are keeping us up to date on what's happening there, much better than we could keep tabs on it ourselves. We couldn't have done what we have done without the help of our sources in Goffstown, and I want to publicly thank them. I will not disclose them, but I will thank them. We couldn't have done it without them. But, you know, the truth of the matter is, is instead of saying, you know what, maybe we made a mistake, and you know, they didn't have to say, hey, uh, you know what, you caught my hand in the cookie jar, you, you caught me trying to pull a fast one. Ha, 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 ha. They could have said, oh, you know, you, you've got a point there. Maybe we should go through a different process. Thank you. But no, they didn't do that. They decided that they were gonna persist in an obviously wrong process. Now look what it's gotten them. I would lay dollars to donuts that Ben Hampton files a lawsuit. I wouldn't be surprised if a couple of the other bidders in this process didn't file a lawsuit, too. If I'm the bidder who, who came in at 27 grand, I want to know why I didn't get the bid. When you, when you don't go with the lowest bidder, you get some, you get some spleening to do. And I think that's what Lori Cludier on the Goffstown School Board was asking for last night. All right, explain it to me. Why are we gonna spend $35,581 when we have lower bids? Why? Oh, we're not gonna tell you that. We haven't awarded the bid yet. And until we award the bid, we're gonna keep it all not, well, wait a minute. You're telling me, who has to vote on awarding the bid, that I can't have the information that regards how you awarded the bid? Really?
WLMW, 90.7 FM.
It's uplifting and powerful, and it's a good message all around.
New Hampshire Family Radio.
It's just a good station to listen to.